Bienvenidos, welcome to a special meeting with the City of Abfumbei, July 31st, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone.
Here.
Councilmember Reddick.
Here.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Vice Mayor Raarback.
Here.
And Mayor Jimenez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May we stand for the pledge? Thank you. How about motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose.
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Raarback.
Yes.
And Mayor Jimenez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you have any reports from closed sessions?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Council had to meet in closed session prior to this meeting to discuss one item, conference with real property negotiators regarding 555 Kelly Avenue and negotiations regarding terms of a potential lease agreement. Nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, if I may, there was a question from Councilmember about public forum. And just wanted to let the Council and the community know that this is a, because this is a special meeting, there's no requirement to have a public forum. So that was not agendized for tonight's meeting. Obviously, all regular meetings have public forum at the beginning of the meeting. So the only substantive item is the item 1A.
We're ready.
All right. Thank you, Councilmembers, community. John Dowdy, sitting in the seat here. We want to first thank you and the community for coming out. We know this is a special meeting night and an interesting topic. This was an item that was raised very recently by the county of San Mateo, the county executive, and was a request due to the timing of ballot measure times to come forward to all the cities within the county to have a conversation, if possible, regarding this issue. I will just preface that we have done the best that we can to bring ourselves up to speed on Article 34 in general. We'll obviously be happy to defer to our city attorney for other assistance and try to really focus on what is Article 34 primarily. And we can go then briefly just into what the county is asking for in their ballot and go from there. So, thank you. So the request, again, from the county executive is to consider the ballot measure here, and I won't read it because it's long, but basically what is being requested in principle is a countywide election ballot measure and election to consider basically overriding and accepting elimination of Article 34 within all boundaries of the county, including incorporated and unincorporated cities and unincorporated areas of the county. So that is what this generally entails. Article 34, in its basic sense, is, goes back to 1950, was approved by an initiative. And what Article 34 put forth is that a voter approval is required prior to development of, I euphemized a little bit, public rental housing. What it really says is low-rent housing by the state, a city, a county, or any other subdivision or public body. What this really was geared at in 1950 was federal kind of urban renewal programs and things that were put forth. And at that point, and even proceeding into subsequent decades, was a focus on federal money focused into basically public projects. And I think any number of us can list out some that we might have come across in our travels or in our lives with that deal. Obviously, things have adjusted and changed a little bit over time in terms of some of those public projects. But that was the issue. And bottom line kind of takeaway on this is that it is not applicable to projects involving public agencies and ownership units. And there, over in the recent 20-year period or so, we've seen certainly the growth of the nonprofit developer world. And this does not generally apply to a nonprofit developer world. And there are also certain funds that have been clarified by the state, by other statute, to exempt out any vote requirement or to basically find that there is no vote requirement for that purpose. History, I've gone into a bit of that, but generally goes back to a single Eureka Housing project in which a challenge to the project was sought by referendum. Supreme Court determined that that was not a referendable project. And ultimately, this snowballed into a 1950 election, Prop 10 statewide election, which created Article 34. As far as we can find, Article 34 is the only such article in any of the constitutions of the 50 states, other 50 states of the Union. So this is a very unique situation. Article 34, sort of the impacts, as I noted, obviously, were probably significantly more considerable when the model was funding by the federal government for city, county, authority projects, things of that nature. 50s, 60s, and 70s, that was really the policies out there. Article 34 impacts by all assessments and evaluation that we've come across basically agree that Article 34 has far less implications and impacts today simply because the model of delivery of housing in its existence is less impactful than it was in the early days of that, of the law, because of the models changed. In part because of probably Article 34 to some extent, but not fully that reason. There have been several repeal attempts over the years. 74, 77, and 93 notably were statewide ballot measures that failed. In more recent times, just this last June, the legislature withdrew SCA 2, which was approved in 2022, which would have placed an initiative on the statewide ballot for consideration of removal of Article 34. And again, that would take presumably two years to recycle back into that point. 2026, general election would be the most logical point that that might be seen again. Now, as noted in the paperwork that you were provided by the county and also from our evaluation, there are provisions which, one, still, you can do a vote for a project. So again, Article 34, in its simplest deal, says, doesn't say it precludes development in projects by a public agency. It says you have to put it to the vote of the people. And/or what other agencies noted here have chosen to do is to basically do a repeal, a soft repeal of Article 34 by basically approving and supporting affordable housing in the context of basically having a vote of the public. In 2022, Measure AA in South, City of South San Francisco was approved, which did just that. Other counties have chosen a path that San Mateo County is asking for input on. One of the questions in that is, what are the implications to, sorry, I lost my way here. What are the implications to active affordable housing projects in the city? At this point, 555 Kelly Avenue, for one, Article 34 does not apply. And I think there's been ample justifications as part of that process. And Stone Pine Cove also does not, Article 34 does not apply because it is an ownership project. And ownership projects are not subject to Article 34 provisions. The ballot initiative, again, is in essence to supersede or to repeal, in essence, in San Mateo County, the provisions of Article 34. Allow for the cities, the county, to proceed with public-funded projects as funding would obviously be available, but allow those projects to be undertaken without further vote of the community or of the county to proceed with those types of projects. And that would be capped at this point. And I understand that there's some consideration of modifications of this, but at this point, the language is 1% of the total housing units over basically any eight-year period is what's suggested there. The recommendation tonight is a simple one. The county has asked for the council's input. This is purely a policy question really for the council. And before you is, the recommendation is to discuss the matter, take obviously community input on this. And the options that we've identified are support, vote to support, and we can convey that information to the county. Vote to recommend that the Board of Supes not place this item on the ballot. We would convey a letter on behalf of the council for that. Or vote to take no official position. And we would convey that position as well to the county for that. I can say, from talking to many of the other city managers throughout the county, that due to recesses and absences by staff and by their councils, I have yet to find a council other than you who have taken this issue up and taken the initiative to have a special meeting and to take this on. And that will have obviously some implications for those other cities in terms of how comfortable their councils and how comfortable their staff are in terms of making these recommendations. So I'm not sure what that will mean on a countywide basis in terms of overall recommendations in this nature. I sense there are probably some clarifying questions. So now would be obviously an appropriate time for that. And please recognize that we are going to do our best, but not subject matter experts will do the best we can to try to answer.
Clarifying questions. Councilmember.
So it's clear, both in your written presentation and what you're saying, where it does not apply. I need you to summarize for me where Article 34 does apply. That's not clear to me.
Excuse me. The simplest answer is the first dot on the PowerPoint. Article 34 requires voter approval prior to development of public rental housing, low-rent housing by the state, a city, a county, or any other subdivision or local public body. Meaning that if we as a city were choosing to be a developer and operator, in essence, of a lower-income, you know, lower-income project, we would have to seek the approval of the voters in order to proceed with that project. That's at its root point what Article 34 does today.
So that would be if the state decided to build its own project, develop its own project, the county, a city, and I'm guessing, according to the county, that would include JPAs and school districts and variety of other public agencies? As long as it's a public agency acting as the developer?
Article 34 includes a pretty exhaustive list of what constitutes public agency. And it basically covers anything that arguably is a subdivision of the state with that that's a public agency. So yes, it's a broad encompassing list.
So that would be, for instance, the county's Home Key Program, I'm guessing, would qualify?
The Home Key actually was written and clarified as not being part of and subject to a vote under Article 34 by the state legislature.
So it would be like if the county wanted to build, say, farmworker housing? Or if HART wanted to, HART doesn't really develop now, though. They do loans and things, but they're not actually developing.
Because of Article 34, frankly, that's, that is, there may be a funding piece to that, but the real issue, I would say, precluding that is they don't develop it because Article 34 either, it doesn't prevent it, but it would make it subject to vote. And I think most public agencies understand the difficulty of pushing those out to vote. It's still available to them. A lot of the issue of HART is just a lack of a funding source that would provide that kind of developer-type monies. But conceivably, they could, but only after a vote.
And so I did listen to the county meeting. And it looks like the universe of public agencies that have done this is limited. It's like Alameda County, Humboldt County, Santa Clara did something that was very time-limited, and then
Sacramento did it in 2022.
And then South City. So actually, a city can do an Affordable Housing Bank vote itself, too. It doesn't have to rely on the county.
We could choose that, or any other city could choose to do that ourselves.
If we had a big enough portfolio of projects that we wanted to do.
Yes.
But we don't need the county to do that. We can do it ourselves.
Does not need to be a county-wide effort to do that. You could proceed at some point in the future to do this yourself.
Great, thank you.
So Article 34 excludes any development by nonprofit developers?
Article 34 does not require a vote. Again, the issue, the key to Article 34 is not that it precludes or limits or says you can't do it. It just says you have to put it to the vote of the people. But a nonprofit developer model would not be subject to an Article 34 vote.
Thank you. Any more clarifying questions? No? You can go to a public comment? I believe it's Sandy Vella?
Hello? Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Sure. I'd just say, you know, we shouldn't give away our power here on the coast. We should reject this proposal outright. It shouldn't go to ballot. We shouldn't give away our authority to San Mateo County agencies to authorize, develop, construct, or acquire low-cost housing on our behalf of the coast. We don't want to put San Mateo County agencies in a position where they allocate all low-cost housing for San Mateo County and the coast because they can, and we granted them the permission to do so. You know, we really aren't sure what they're going to do and why. You know, who knows? You know, they might want to allocate all low-cost housing to, you know, El Granada or, you know, Moss Beach. Why? Who knows? Political purposes? They don't want it in their neighborhood. They think it's better over there. You know, there's a great place in their mind every time they go to the coast, and there's that huge lot right by Sam's. You know, who knows? We don't know. Again, not sure why we wouldn't just reject this outright. Why would we give away our coastal voice and power? What we really need is a detailed overall housing plan. Who's going to make the decisions? Why they're going to make the decisions? What the decision process will be? You know, we need a really, a book that talks about all this instead of, you know, a paragraph giving away our power. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Kolda?
All right. So my name's Joe Kolda, and I am here to read a letter from John Christian, who is the Executive Director of Real Property Support Corporation at the Archdiocese of San Francisco. Dear Commissioners, I am the Executive Director of the Real Property Support Corporation of the Archdiocese of San Francisco, RPSC. The RPSC is the fee owner of the buildings and grounds commonly known as Our Lady of the Pillar Parish. This includes the 1.55 acres generally to the north of the existing church structure and ancillary buildings, which has been earmarked for potential development by the current pastor, Father Jose Corral, together with parish leadership for Catholic education. In the current housing element draft, it is referred to as Site 3, 300 block of Church Street. In short, this parcel is not surplus land. It has long been the stated goal of the parish to develop this land to further the laudable goals of providing quality, faith-based education in a safe environment. It is erroneous to refer to the parish grounds as a housing opportunity site. The parish is moving forwards to develop a state-of-the-art educational facility. Parish leaders have firmly and consistently communicated to city officials that the Archdiocese opposes the consideration of this site in any housing element discussions. This is an educational opportunity site, and Our Lady of the Pillar Academy is proof of that fact. The academy is providing access to quality education, and the academy has already doubled its enrollment during its short existence. The land is zoned for school use, which is a categorically permitted use. And let's not forget that the education code requires access to recreational space for young students. Building 50 or more units of housing would obliterate the potential for recreational space as the education code mandates. The current draft states erroneously and misleadingly that chief, that city staff has met with the owner who indicated interest in future affordable residential development on this property. My office is aware of no such meeting or meeting of the minds. I am aware that the city has forcefully advocated for this land, but the Archdiocese through the RPSC supports the use of this parcel for its educational mission. The current, the current draft states that a constraint is the owner's interest in all potential uses may affect timing. A more correct observation would be that the parish has a new academy, and it needs room to grow. This land is ideally suited for Catholic educational purposes, and we are working towards that goal.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Prepare to be amazed. Thank you for your consideration. Truly yours, John Christian.
Thank you. Joseph, can I ask a question? How many students in the academy? No, I'm asking you.
Twelve.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I did just want to point out that, it took me a moment, but this does not appear to relate to tonight's agenda item. This relates to the housing element, which will be before council next Wednesday. Is that right? So anyone wishing to speak on the housing element, please come back next Wednesday. The meeting starts, will be starting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. So just to clarify, today we're discussing only items on Article 34, nothing related to the housing element. I see some of the cars, actually, you will be talking about the housing element, and that's going to be discussed at the following meeting next week. Derek Kolda, can you please clarify if you're here to speak on Article 34 or the housing element?
We want to make a request to the city council about the housing element before next week.
That will be done next week. Are you here for Article 34?
No.
Thank you. Have a seat. Julia Kolda, are you here to discuss Article 34 or housing element?
Hello. I would say about this article.
This is a quick question. Are you here for Article 34 or housing element?
I am here to talk about, I thought this was public comment. We did see that public comments, public comment.
We don't have public comments today.
We were hoping to be able to let our thoughts known to you guys, so.
It's a quick, it's a nasty question. Are you here for Article 34 or housing element?
We'll be here in full force next week.
Thank you. Albert Yam?
Good evening, Council. My name is Albert Yam. I'm a resident of Millbrae. And we have firsthand experience dealing with the La Quinta Inn, which the county proposed to purchase it and turn it into a permanent supportive housing. It is one kind of affordable housing. And that was last year. And it created a lot of overwhelming concerns of the local residents. It changed the local commercial environment activities. It created public safety issues because of the service costs increased. And that led to the recall election of two council members that happened last week. And both council members were voted out in a landslide. Affordable housing does not necessarily equal the permanent supportive housing because it's just one kind of housing. But this measure, ballot measure, it's so ambiguous. It doesn't talk about what kind of housing is limited. So I think it's very important for your city council to retain your ability to shape the future of your community and keep that right before being taken away by the county. City of Millbrae has a discussion at last council meeting about proposing their own Article 34 ballot for the residents of Millbrae. So we get to vote on our own for our city on the ballot measure whether residents of the local community approve or reject the Article 34 building of Low the local community approve or reject the Article 34 building of Lowingham Housing. Happy to answer any questions for anyone in the attendance. I hope you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Albert.
I'm here for the item. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Paul Nagengas. I lived at 229, I still do live at 229 Valdez Avenue, City of Half Moon Bay in District 3. The County of San Mateo has placed the city in an awkward position to respond by tomorrow at 12:00 PM, stating whether the city council would support, oppose, or have no opinion on a proposed ballot measure, which the county has not yet analyzed. In tonight's agenda report, city staff acknowledges that the county notified the city at the last minute, and staff has not had sufficient time to develop a written report about the ballot for this public meeting. Now, the public is forced to formulate an understanding based on a short presentation from staff about the merits of placing this measure on the November ballot. I encourage the city council and city staff to have a robust conversation to fully understand why the county is rushing to place this measure for a vote in November. I would also hope that your discussion will aim to recognize all consequences of this proposed measure on the City of Half Moon Bay. I am looking forward to listening to your discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, council members. My name's Dan Stegging. There is no legal precedent for a county to seize the constitutionally-protected voting rights of a group of people. It's never happened. The one in Sacramento is not an allegory. I couldn't say, I don't like everybody named Deb up there, because they're protected by Prop 4 in 1911, their constitutionally-protected voting rights. Likewise, Joaquin is protected by a constitutionally-protected voting right, and repealing your council members is protected by Prop 8, a constitutionally-protected voting right. Article 34 is already on the ballot under regional measure for the 48.3 billion, $42,000 per household housing bond. That also tries to override Article 34. 1% per year, 2,900 homes, that doubles the county every 72 years, and there's no financial impact? That seems unlikely. I strongly urge you to place your own ballot measure, gauging your own citizens' opinions on this topic. You shouldn't give up your right to protect your coast, you shouldn't give up your right to self-determination. It's very possible that the county, like someone had said, might just say, you know, I think every homeless person should go on the coast. It's a nice little place to keep them all where they won't get their grubby feet all over everybody else. We can just sequester them right there. It's not the way to do it. Your people deserve a vote. Housing should be spread around the county. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tim Lyons, and I am the new headmaster of Our Lady of the Pillar Academy, and I'll speak next week with regard to the housing element question. But for today, I did want to clarify two things. We were 12 students last year, we will be 24 students for year number two, and we'll come back next week to address the question of affordable housing and the use of that property. But I do want to kind of highlight two comments that have been made tonight that I think are important for this, relevant to this ballot measure. Two individuals have said this, "Don't give up your vote, don't give up your vote." We strongly want affordable housing, we want to help people, that's why we're starting a school. But we also strongly believe that the most effective way to help people of all different types is at the lowest possible level of authority, and therefore, we strongly, we're here to say, just analogous to how we're building an incredible school over there that's going to help all people in the coast side, we're doing this privately with our own money, our own resources, because we love and we care. We, I am here to say, when it comes to ballot, this ballot measure, please do not take the rights of people, citizens on the ground here locally, to care and support for people locally.
Can you please hold on to your claps? Thank you, Tim. Thank you for clarifying, number of students. Father Jose Corral, no, thank you. Nancy Clarkin. Palet Eisen.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I'm here to talk about this Measure 34. I'm totally with the very first speaker who came up here and talked about giving up anything when it comes to, we're an incorporated city. Many of us are living in this incorporated city for the very reason that it's incorporated, and it's not unincorporated, and therefore, subject to whatever the County of San Mateo wants to do. So, we're like the idea of being incorporated in order to determine our own, how we want our town to be, and definitely, first and foremost, our land use. We have our borders, what do we want inside our area to be developed? So, I absolutely recommend that you emphatically tell the board of supervisors that, no, we do not support overturning, eliminating Measure 34.
Thank you, Palet.
Good evening, Hal Wagner. I am here to speak to Article 34, and in particular, it's a component of entitling the public to participate and vote on those projects and proposals which it is eligible to vote upon. And I've been in town for 32 years. I absolutely admire the fact that many ballot initiatives have, have been presented to the voters here in town, such as saving the bridge on the coast side, such as keeping Cal Fire, the limits to growth in Measures A and D and others. I tremendously admired and miss John Lynch, who spent so many decades collecting signatures. And with respect to, you know, current situation, it seems to me that, you know, we have a property here which the city owns, the city is an applicant for. I don't know whether that has been taken into consideration with respect to one of the current projects, but I did want to alert the city council to the fact that over 10% of the electorate of the City of Half Moon Bay has, in less than the last 30 days, signed petitions put out by the committee to let HMB voters decide, as described in the website lethmbvotersdecide.com, that we would like the council to put questions like this, such as one that's out here now, that people have signed this particular petition for, and which will be presented to the city clerk tomorrow afternoon, to put these things on the ballot. I understand, you know, there's a lot of legal arguments, and there's a lot of staff rationalizations for not consulting the public, but as elected officials who represent us who live in the town, and as we've heard from other speakers here, the importance of being represented as citizens of an incorporated city, I would like to ask that you all reject the county's seeking to obviate city authority, and that you sincerely consider at every opportunity consulting the electorate. Thank you.
Can you please hold on to your claps? Thank you.
Buenas tardes a miembros del Consilio y personas presentes. Mi nombre es Rocío Avila, y soy un líder comunitario y miembro del Comité de Viviendas Justas. Mi abogacía por las viviendas accedibles aquí en Half Moon Bay y en áreas no incorporadas del Condado de San Mateo continúan por ver la gran necesidad de vivienda aquí en la costa. Quiero mencionar que muchas de las personas que necesitamos una vivienda no podemos votar y no tenemos el derecho de votar cuando hay decisiones importantes que nos benefician. Quiero pedir a las personas que pueden hacerlo que piensen en la necesidad de las personas que necesitamos una vivienda digna y justa. Sería injusto que las personas que tenemos la necesidad de una vivienda no podamos formar parte de una votación, y sé que las personas que no tienen esta necesidad lo harán siempre en contra.
Yes, good evening, members of the city council and everybody who's present. My name is Rocío Avila, and I'm a community leader, and also a member of Housing, Just Housing de Alas. My advocacy is for affordable housing in Half Moon Bay, areas that are not incorporated of the county of San Mateo, and to also continue to look at the major necessity that we have here in, along the coast. I also want to mention that lots of people, well, we need housing, and we, we don't have the right to vote when there's important decisions that would be a benefit to us. And I want to ask the people who can do this that, to think about the necessities of people that really need housing, just housing and dignified housing. It would be an injustice to, if the people who have that necessity of housing, that we can't be a part of this vote, and that persons that don't, that have this particular necessity, that will always be perhaps contrary to this.
Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Yo sé que en este momento estamos hablando de un tema muy importante.
I know that we're speaking about a very important subject right now.
Y sé que muchas personas no tienen ni la mínima idea del importante que es la construcción de viviendas accesibles.
And I know that a lot of people have no idea how important it is to have affordable housing.
El problema que se da en nuestro pueblo es que...
The problem that we have in our town is...
Las personas que necesitan vivienda no pueden votar.
The people that need these type of housings are not able to vote.
Cuando la ciudad propone crear más viviendas...
Si, me disculpan, excuse me. No están hablando sobre el artículo 34 y lo que estamos discutiendo hoy. La, eso sería para la próxima semana. Ahorita es solamente para discutir, tratar el artículo 34. So, they, we actually, we gonna, we gonna stop, then we're discussing Article 34.
Okay.
So, that will be for next week.
Okay.
Gracias, Carolina. Si puede regresar la próxima semana, por favor. If you can come back next week. Yes, can you please go to the online speakers? Thank you.
Our first online speaker is Carlisle Ann Young. I go ahead and speak. Can you give me just one second here? You're on my computer, but not for everybody else. Can you try now, Sid?
Can you hear me?
Hmm, not yet.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
Sure, let me know when.
All right, you're just going to be my test subject, so how about now?
Can you hear me now?
No. Well, I can, no one else can.
No, not yet?
Not yet. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. I'll just wait.
Is it plugged in here? It's just coming out of there.
Mayor, while we're working on technical issues, we did receive another card from, from the public that, if you wish to, we could work on our, on our technology, and if you want, if you're, if you were, want to, you could take that, that individual.
Thank you, we'll do that, thank you. Julia Kolda.
Hi there, I am here to speak on Article 34. I just want to, just short and sweet, I just think elected officials should hear from the public and listen to the public. I was very impressed to see how quickly so many signatures were gathered to put 555 Kelly on the ballot, to hear from the city, and a lot of us couldn't even sign the petition. I live in Half Moon Bay, but I live in Miramar, so I'm not allowed to even vote for things that affect me, which is frustrating, that's another conversation. But it was impressive for the amount of people they did have to draw from, how quickly those signatures were gathered. And, I mean, you guys are here because the public had voted you in, so I know you must respect the vote. So, I don't know if it will go over well if we tell the community we're not going to let them vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, something's not working, so I'm going to try to use my speaker from my mic with the computer to get the sound for everyone, so I appreciate your patience. Sid, can you go ahead and try speaking again for us?
Let me know if it's working. Can people hear me?
Can anyone hear that? Can you hear that, kind of? Try again, thanks again for being our test subject here.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sorry, but it's beginning to pick. Can people hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Can you hear her now? Okay, yeah, we're going to roll with it.
Okay, I'll try to speak loudly enough for it to transmit over Jessica's microphone. What I read, when I read my Caligis letter, was that it's for 2,900 units countywide per year, and then it rolls over. I didn't see any money that they would give per year to any communities that take on projects. projects. So to me, especially for a city like Half Moon Bay, no offense, that has a deficit right now, that doesn't seem like it's a plus. Even right now with the county putting in 72 units in Moss Beach, they're putting in a project that doesn't have Highway One mobility, sorry, the Highway One Moss Beach corridor isn't gonna be completed till 2030 and yet they approved the project to start anytime for Cypress Point, which is 72 units. Give any money to Caltrans to get that project rolling sooner. And nevertheless, 555 Kelly, there's no money for traffic or parking to, you know, to help out with that project. So I don't see any advantage to voting for this project. It doesn't seem like, to me, the county is eyeing the coast side because we're the most vacant land, both in the unincorporated areas and Half Moon Bay. I listened to the fire board meeting last week and the, I guess it's the fire marshal was going over all the projects that are being approved and he let it be known that Big Wave sold off everything on their parcel, which was going to be commercial units, but he sold it to Mid Penn Housing, which obviously they probably have the opportunity or gonna think they have the opportunity to rezone that commercial property to housing. And it's in the tsunami inundation zone area, but, you know, they'll probably try to connive their way through to build housing up there on that parcel. But all these years, they've been trying to develop it as a commercial project. So I don't know, I mean, the county doesn't have a lot of extra space over on the peninsula side. So I would hate to see the peninsula put all their new housing over here, especially only affordable housing. So I would hope that you don't vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sid.
Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate your patience.
Sure. Bye-bye.
Okay, next, David Rokoski.
Yes, actually, I'm Joanne Rokoski. It's just coming up with my husband's name.
No worries.
Thank you for the opportunity to make a statement. I wanna come back, if I could, to the original intent of Article 34 when it was introduced and then passed in 1950. This was a reaction to federal fair housing legislation and in fact, it was an intent to block housing, housing for people of low income. And even the original sponsors, including the California Association of Realtors, has made publicly an apology for ever getting this on the ballot and letting it become the law in California. They are no longer in support of that ballot, excuse me, of Article 34. It was and is a discriminatory piece of legislation that is allowed to begin, to block housing for people and housing here is dramatically needed. This approval will not allow particular developments to occur without the scrutiny of those individual developments. There will still be SEQA requirements, for example. So I urge the City Council to see this as another opportunity to protect the low-income residents of Half Moon Bay who are struggling to find affordable housing. Even in Millbrae, where the lawsuit was dismissed by the judge, it was done on procedural grounds and could come back again to prevent the use of the La Quinta Inn as being redeveloped for permanent supportive housing, something that is drastically needed for people who are currently unhoused. So I urge the City Council members to vote in support of the ballot measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next speaker is MCC Zoom. Could you please state your name, MCC Zoom?
That's Greg Diegus. I'm vice chair of the Midcoast Community Council. I'm here speaking as an individual. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Many of you know my sincere appreciation and concern for Half Moon Bay because we're both physically and fiscally connected. I note this agenda item contains prejudicial wording by staff, quote, "Article 34 imposes a voter approval requirement." That should be, empowers voter approval or requires their vote. My primary concern here tonight, however, is potential unintended financial consequences of waiving this constitutional right. For example, so-called affordable housing projects tax the middle class to enrich wealthy investors who get subsidies and tax credits owning those properties while sentencing the tenants to perpetual rent servitude. One of those tax breaks is the so-called nonprofit status of those properties, which drains a city tax base. This is, of course, especially harmful when the property is a hotel and the city loses both property tax and tenant occupancy tax. The long-term impact of non-taxable properties leads to what some call a city's structural budget deficit. And if a city does not have fiscal sustainability, it cannot address other priorities. There's no reason to agree with this Article 34 ballot measure and disenfranchise the voters of Half Moon Bay and there may be severe unintended financial consequence. Please preserve your rights and avoid any further financial risks hiding behind an unanalyzed so-called emergency measure. Regional Measure Four will also undermine Article 34 and this is already on the November ballot. That is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Next, we have Jeremy.
Good evening, council members, and thank you, staff, for that really excellent thoughtful presentation. I'm Jeremy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Our mission is to work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes for those who need them. To that end, the county's proposed ballot measure is about empowering cities to deliver affordable homes for their communities. The county's measure doesn't only empower the county, but also all of its constituent cities to invest in affordable housing. Authorizing affordable housing under Article 34 has no impact on a city's land use decisions. Half Moon Bay and all the other cities of San Mateo County will still have absolute authority over zoning, over entitlements, over all of the other rules that regulate housing. The county cannot invest in preserving any affordable homes or building any affordable homes without complying with the local rules that are already in place that anyone else would have to comply with. Instead, what the proposed ballot measure is trying to do is empower both the county but also Half Moon Bay's duly elected leaders to make decisions that are best for the community. The city itself will be more able to preserve or develop affordable homes and the city will be able to partner with HART, the countywide housing endowment and regional trust, to bring resources to preserve low-cost market housing or affordable housing that's at risk of converting to market rate, of which there are hundreds of units in Half Moon Bay. This ballot measure was brought to the county by HART because HART wants to be able to invest in preserving affordable homes for, in perpetuity. And right now, just the simple risk of lawsuits like what's happening in Millbrae means that HART can't afford to take those risks. The county is proposing to give residents a vote. That's what the ballot measure is, an opportunity to vote on this rule. It's a vote to make affordable homes feasible countywide, not just in any one neighborhood. I'm also just gonna note that Regional Measure Four doesn't have anything to do with Article 34. It's a completely separate measure about funding for affordable housing and that money would probably be partnering with Lytech projects, so it would already be exempt from Article 34 under state law. So this is really about the countywide ballot measure and the county's efforts to empower its cities to support affordable homes. Thank you for your time tonight and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next, we have Laura.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hello and good evening to the council. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Laura Smith, resident of Millbrae, and I haven't come here to meddle in your affairs, but I did wanna share some things that we have learned in Millbrae about Article 34. I was just a resident who didn't know anything about it and now I know a lot more about it. And one of the things that I've learned is that the county is very, very eager to snatch away our Article 34 voting rights and there's a good reason for it. We've learned over time that affordable housing is a very big umbrella and there's all types of affordable housing. In private-public partnerships, if more than 50% of a project is funded and going to be owned by a private entity such as a nonprofit developer or others, it's not subject to an Article 34 vote. So that's why affordable housing can continue to be built without Article 34 votes. It really doesn't apply and the suggestion that it does apply is just misleading. The projects that really are affected by Article 34 are public housing projects that are, end up being owned by a government entity. They're usually 100% funded by government funds such as the Home Key projects. And I think that there is a legal dispute still pending because of Millbrae about whether Home Key funds are really exempt or if that's something that the legislator just imagined that they could do to basically gut Article 34 without a vote of the state populace, which is really the only, you know, an article in the constitution has to be put up to a vote of the public to be repealed. It can't just be chipped away at by various legislative bodies who want to repeal it on their own, which is what San Mateo County is trying to do here. So what they're doing is asking us to vote to give up our vote, is what they're doing. It's kind of making a mockery of Article 34. And what we've found is that for some projects like maybe La Quinta project, maybe the Coast House in Half Moon Bay and others, you know, citizens do have a lot of concerns about how much it's gonna cost the city. They're not free to the city. They can increase, make high demands on emergency services. They can take away hotel tax, property tax, and there's a lot of concerns about the site of locations and, you know, the premise of drug use, you know, basically illegal drugs are very accepted and untreated mental illness is also accepted. And we have concerns about policies of the state related to those. So the public needs to be a part of this solution to homelessness. It's not that we're trying to prevent anybody from being helped, but Article 34 is very relevant to these types of projects and we believe that we should not be giving up our vote on that particular issue. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have one more speaker, Steven.
Good evening, Half Moon Bay Council and esteemed residents. My name is Steven Rinaldi. I'm a long-term, 40-year-plus resident of Millbrae and I'm calling in tonight to share with you my own personal experience in dealing with the county, especially in regards to La Quinta, which is a project that I live two blocks away from. First and foremost, I wanna say that as a city council and as residents of Half Moon Bay, you have an obligation to protect the coastline. And by getting rid of your Article 34 voting rights, which is what Mike Callagie wants people to vote away, you are basically giving him a blank check to come in and build as he sees fit. And I will remind you that in regards to La Quinta, Millbrae was listed as the number one fastest-growing city in 2023, number five in the Bay Area, number 10 in the state of California. None of that mattered to Mike Callagie and the Board of Supervisors. None of them did their due diligence to see what the financial impact would be to Millbrae or all the affordable housing we've already built. No one's given us recognition for that. And I will also tell you with Article 34, why should someone in Millbrae be voting to take away your residents' rights so the county can come in and build as they like? I will also tell you that with cities like Hillsborough, they're not going to be building any of these permanent supportive housing units in their locations. That is a given, 110%. So not only are you allowing Mike to build however he wants, but you're promoting inequity with these projects throughout the county because certain cities won't be obligated to house these projects because they won't have the quote-unquote "infrastructure" to support them. So last I'm gonna leave you with, smarten up these Home Key projects. They have a lot of controversy associated with them. They don't have to follow SEQA, so there's no environmental impact studies. And I will tell you one thing, it makes absolutely no sense to let your voters' rights get voted out. Protect your voters, protect the coastline, and whatever you do, do not let Mike Callagie put this measure to the ballot. It would be detrimental for Half Moon Bay and all coastal cities. Thank you.
We have no more online speakers at this time.
Thank you. Comments? Vice Mayor?
It's totally ironic that the 1950 effort to squash affordable housing, which was probably much racially motivated, is being used now to actually increase affordable housing. So while I'm no fan of the fact that this was done quickly, I still support this ballot measure that would allow, not require, but allow public agencies to build affordable housing, 2,900 units in the whole county. I think it's a desirable goal and by putting a ballot measure on the, a measure on the ballot, we'll let the voters decide whether or not we think it makes sense to produce more affordable housing by public agencies in the county. So I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yes, I would prefer that we send a letter opposing this being placed on the ballot. First of all, I just wanna clarify, I think staff did a pretty good job, all in all, explaining what Article 34 does. And it looks like right now it's only limited to public agency projects. So most projects like in Half Moon Bay are gonna be the other kind, they're gonna be nonprofits, et cetera. It's, you know, it's unlikely, given our financial situation, that we would actually undertake and develop a project. But fundamentally, I have a problem with giving control of our land use over to San Mateo County for a variety of reasons. But I think folks have raised a very good issue with the lack of specific language relating to geographic distribution. We know that, I think it's, we can comfortably say that Atherton, Hillsborough, Portola Valley, Woodside, the wealthier communities in this county would not be the subject for these projects. They're wealthy, they have good attorneys, they fight this stuff. My fear is that what ends up happening is that these sorts of projects through the county will end up in the, in lower-income or more vulnerable communities, including small communities who are not, you know, very wealthy. And folks have said, well, it's only removing, you know, the vote. You still have land use authority for specific... You still have land use authority for specific projects and things. The problem is, the power there between the county and the city is asymmetrical, right? The county has way more power. It's going to be really difficult for Half Moon Bay or other cities to actually, you know, have a measure of oversight and control over those projects because the county has, you know, lots of lawyers and land use planners who are going to fight any restrictions on these projects, right? It's not just a matter of the vote. It's going to be the county coming in, and we're not going to be able to get a handle on these projects effectively. So I think that's a real problem. And, you know, the unincorporated area of the county, under County Measure A, they can only have, they don't, by the way, they don't have an approved housing element, the county. And in the unincorporated areas, they're only allowed a maximum of 40 dwelling units a year. So, you know, I think they're going to want to put their, you know, their housing is going to be on the coast side. It's going to be in Half Moon Bay and Pacifica because that's going to be easy. That's going to be the low-hanging fruit. And I just don't want to give up our control to the county. So I'm totally against it. And I'm against the process by which they brought this forward. I know that HART's been talking about it, and certainly Senator Allen with his bill to get rid of, you know, Article 34. You know, that's been in the news. I don't think it's been on everybody's radar in terms of cities, you know, and other agencies about what this means. And I listened to their meeting today, and the whole thing was, well, affordable housing is an emergency. Well, it's been an emergency for many years. You know, it's not going to be fixed overnight. So I'm not, I think that's a red herring. But I think it's a slippery slope for us to hand over any of our land use authority to the county because, you know, we're not going to have much traction with their projects. It's going to be forced upon us. And, you know, certainly, we've been working with them. We can continue to work with them and collaborate on good projects. The Stone Pine Cove, you know, the Coast House. We don't need a ballot measure saying that we don't have any, you know, voting authority here to do it. We can have our own bank of projects. If we had, you know, enough projects in the mill, you know, we could do what South City did and, you know, have our own little exemption from Prop 34. So I don't think it's needed. Lots of projects are being built in this county without Article 34 votes. Even if they could, people aren't doing them. You know, they're not enforcing it. So I was one of the people who asked for this to be discussed, you know, at a public meeting because I see this as threatening to my community. So I would like us to send a letter opposing that it be on the ballot. You know, the county has lots of resources. They can push this on the voters. We don't have so much. So given the fact that they didn't take the time to roll this out appropriately, I don't expect that, you know, we're going to fare well on a vote. I just think it's wrong, and I'm not going to support it.
Councilmember?
Yeah, if the issue were that the county wanted to build affordable housing on the coast for the use of coastal residents, I would have absolutely no problem with this measure. But if it's a county-sponsored affordable housing project on the coast, it's not going to be used exclusively by coastal folks. It's going to be used by anybody in the county. And I object to it on that, from that perspective. The other thing I object to is giving away authority to the county over what we do with our land. I agree with Councilmember Ruddock on that. I'm sorry that it's come to this. I think if it were, I would love to have the voters have the say on something like this. But I don't think the voters are going to be able to understand the initiative. I had tremendous trouble understanding it. And staff did a great job of trying to get me to understand it, but it took me a long time to figure out what was going on here. So I don't think the general public is going to get it. And I don't want to be building, have the county building anything in our city that is going to be used by people not from our city. So that's my main objection.
Councilmember?
I probably lean towards not taking a position. I think this is very vague, what the county's put together here. It feels like they are saying, "We're following Article 34 by asking your permission in advance to build this conglomerate of unspecified affordable housing units." So we had the situation with the Coast House where they were using, what's it called, Home Key money and for emergency homeless housing. So they didn't have to get permission, I presume, which is why they were able to buy that hotel.
It wasn't covered by Article 34.
Right, right. So we've had an experience where we didn't have a choice, basically. They didn't have to come to us for approval. So knowing that, we negotiated with the county and got a lot of detail about it. And they also agreed to have an oversight committee. So we had an idea of what that project would look like. And so far, I think it's been mostly a successful project. But this is granting carte blanche ahead of time. So if the county wants to come in and propose certain projects here, then I'd rather see it go project by project. But I have no idea, based on what I'm reading here, what it could look like. It's just, so I don't really know. You know, we say we don't want to sign away our rights. I'm not even sure what the heck our rights are here when I look at this per project. Come in, you know, yeah. It's more difficult, maybe, but this just seems like a shortcut without the due diligence of having voters approve a project and having the county come in and describe, here's what we want to do. And if you want to use some of our land or whatever, you need to tell us more detail. So I don't see that here. So I can go either way, either not take a stand on it or vote, you know, a letter saying this is why we're not crazy about this idea.
Thank you. It's an interesting measure. We know we need affordable housing in our community. We know we need somebody to develop the affordable housing in our community. We know that nonprofits are excluded from, give me a minute. I know you're in a hurry to go somewhere, but please, you know, give me some time. So we know we need that. But, you know, the other thing is, we were voted by Half Moon Bay. We took this position by the vote in Half Moon Bay. And for me, it's about protecting, you know, what we have in Half Moon Bay. And I agree. No, we, you know, the councilor, no, Brownstone. Any decision to build in Half Moon Bay, it comes to us. Any project that the county has offered to be here in our community, we have to have the final say. So we can do a letter for the reasons, you know, why, you know, we don't want to be on the same boat. And we make decisions in Half Moon Bay. So I oppose this, and I'm interested in having a letter to be drafted, you know, to the county. Why? Because we don't want to take, you know, the, we don't want to lose the decision of what is built. We know we need affordable housing. We can work with the county. We can work with the developers, nonprofits. But we need to have the final say.
The recommendation would be to take a motion in a second and have a voice vote by roll call on a position. What we have heard is a consensus, at least, I think from four of you, that is to send a letter not in support of this ballot measure at this point in time. And if that is the consensus, then we'd ask for a motion to that effect and then a second, and then we'll have a roll call.
So moved. Second?
Roll call?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
No.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we will, just as a close to that, we will prepare a brief letter to the county expressing the best we can. And then we can follow forward with that and deal with that down the road, should anything further occur with this. But we will convey your thoughts, concerns, and your position on this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any future discussions, agenda items? No, nothing? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.